And then you can start with your.
Yep, it is five o'clock. All right, let's call this meeting to order. We have two, three, four members, four members here. We have a quorum. Now if we could stand for these, I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands.
Gary, was anything, did anything come in at all here until today as far as public participation?
Don't leave, we didn't get anything by the mail or in writing.
All right, so I'm gonna skip having to read that paragraph. We're gonna run right into Article One. Do you consider other business and adjustments to the agenda? Certainly, it's been brought to my attention that we need to consider transferring some money. Kevin Doobie approached the town manager about moving money from the road account to cover the culvert cost. Kevin, you want to say?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah?
Mr. Chair, something else I'd like to add to the agenda is we have a mediation with the K R versus town Madawaska case. It's coming next week and we need to appoint two board members to attend mediation, which is going to be by, that would be with the town manager. So that would be, I'm not sure where you want to put it on the agenda, but between Kevin's request for transfer of reserve funds and what I've just mentioned would be the two items of other business that we need to consider.
Okay, well, let's, let's cover, since I brought up Kevin's issue right now, let's take care of that one and then we'll go to the K R. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you perfect.
So Kevin, did you wanna say anything at this point or?
Yeah, it makes about three or four years that we know about the Sixteenth Avenue Culvert that's failing. Three Fridays ago, we had that heavy rain. The end of the culvert collapsed and plugged up. The water flooded from Mr. Saint Jar's residence on the corner, right by the Casey Hall. All the way to Seventeenth Avenue, there was about a foot of water across the whole road. And he called the police department because there was water coming into his cellar from the drain tower. So when I got there, it just all of a sudden let go the bottom section. And it started draining back, so there wasn't much we could do, but we had spoke about that before, saying that if that were ever happened, we'd have to pop out the bottom section of the culvert to allow the group to go through. So Gary, Gary contacted D E P to get all the, to make sure the guy was okay with that. He came up. And, cause he had an issue, I think, with Mark to take care of. And he saw that and he said, it's an emergency. Do what we have to do. So I had to call Ed Pelzis, cause you needed a big trouble. They took out about twenty to twenty-five loads of film and they popped out a twenty-foot section of culvert. And then we had to slope that back with riprap. We put seventeen loads of riprap to put the bank back so it wouldn't slide, cause it kept sliding down into the roof. So we cleaned that all up and that's just a Band-Aid like we had spoke about before. So the bill on that, the total bill for all the trucks and the excavator and the riprap was ninety-two hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. So I think that you gotta pack it with the bill and then all the pictures of before and then during and after what we did. It took about eight, nine hours from six-thirty in the morning till four, four-thirty in the afternoon to complete. But that's just a Band-Aid because as the water went down in the beginning of this week, I went into the, well, I didn't go into the culvert, but I went into the end. And there's other sections that are collapsed halfway down. And we, we knew three years ago that we were gonna push it off as hard as we can, but I think that this year, that's gonna have to be changed. Because if that other section falls, we're gonna be digging into the driveway of the Casey in order to pop out that section. And I'm trying not to disturb, so I'd rather take the money to fix that and do the whole culvert. So that's where we're at. So I'm asking for ninety-two hundred and thirty-five dollars to pay off the pelletiers for that emergency dig. And then we're gonna have to sit down this year and figure out what we want to do with that and if we want to move forward. To, to see what's gonna be done with that. My recommendation is, is that if that collapses this time, I, I can't afford to dig into the road and, and pop out sections of culvert, you know. It, it has to be done because we have a sewer line that runs over the culvert and a water line for Sixteenth Avenue. So that's, if that washes out, then we've lost the sewer in that area and the water, the water for the water district, so.
So we need a motion?
Well, I've got a question for.
Yep, go ahead.
Or I mean, we could do the motion for, well, my question is, is when you actually go to do the full replacement of this later on?
Yes.
Are you gonna be looking to take money on the same reserve account or, I mean, cause this is not, this is not getting better any time. And I'd rather if we can take action today to get you started on the ability to replace this the right way. If we start flooding people's homes, we're responsible for paying for their damages too. So this is not gonna get any cheaper tomorrow than it will be today.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, if, I'll make the motion that we go ahead and do, and approve the transfer of nine thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. And I'd also like to see if we can look to move forward with the replacement of it in the very near future.
I hear.
Go ahead, Gary.
So, you know, Kevin and I have been talking about that and so that, what happens is that's a major brook. And so when we look to do the replacement of that, where it's, it's gonna be a permitting process.
Right.
And that permitting process is gonna involve, it's gonna go through D E P obviously, but D E P has to look to other agencies to get their, their input. And I W, for the fisheries and wildlife, it's gonna have to look at that brook to determine if it's a, considered a fish passage brook, if you will. If it's a brook that is a high-quality habitat for brook trout passage, then we're gonna have to, you know. It's gonna make, it would make a difference in what kind of culvert we're putting there. Because obviously there's a, I'm not sure exactly the details, but there's only so much falls, you know, that you can do. That would be allowed to prevent fish from eating the water swan mouth. So it's only through the permitting process, I think, when we can start talking to D E P and I W about that. Before we actually know what kind of culvert goes in there and there's culverts and there's white, you know, white bottom culverts. When it comes to fish passions, it can get pretty expensive. And I know D E P has some program funding that we can apply for to help offset that. So that we'll be looking into that in the coming months. That's all I have.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Yes.
I know you say you're gonna look into it. In my opinion, this kind of feels a little bit like an emergency. So I just wanna stress that it really needs to happen because, I mean, you're affecting people's well, water and sores and stuff. That's a really big deal. So.
I have, I met with E J Prescott this week, cause they were at the mill slip lining a pipe for, for Twin Rivers. And the pelletiers and E J Prescott and Mark, the sewer department, the water district, we all met there. So then the guy that sells the pipe gave us a recommendation. I understand permitting what, you know, D E P says and that, but they recommended a pipe for us. And I've already got the ball rolling. I mean, like, we're, as far as, as soon as we can get, like Gary can talk to the fisheries and the D E P and stuff like that. I've already talked to the contractor, you know, to see what can be done and when. We're not in a, like a code red right now because the water's flowing through, but it's something we definitely need to be done by the end of fall. So I'm figuring that, you know, let's get our stuff in order and work through the process, you know, the best way we can. And then I think that come midsummer, when the water goes down and stuff like that, then we can attack that culvert and, you know, do what we have to do.
Yep.
So what do you, what do we think we're looking at for cost if we don't have to worry about the fish? Like, what are we?
I think that if, best case scenario, if we don't have to, you know, worry about the inland and wildlife, we're gonna be at about a hundred thousand, give or take. I'd say twenty, twenty-five thousand.
So we'd have to at least consider that, at least that much in your budget.
Cause that pipe.
Cause that's not in your budget right now, right? The budget you requested for us to pass, now this is not in there.
And, and what happens is that that's not the only culvert that's failing. We have other ones that, some of them are not as costly as that. But over the thirty, forty-year span of a culvert, we're starting to tend to trend towards the end of its life. And we're seeing a lot of culvert change and failures and collapsing and washouts because of that.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, we've been patching and trying to get by, like golf course, we patched it two years ago. And, you know, we're gonna get by, I'm hoping, for another three to five years, but after that, at some point, we're gonna have to do that one too. And that one is over twenty feet deep, so.
Well, I mean, you're saying, you're telling us at least at this point that this is, this is not an emergency, like we need to do, we need to act on it tonight. So we could bring this up as a, as another article in the next, in the next meeting? You're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
So by the time that we, we, we get stuff ordered, when we do decide that, when we find out what's going on, it's gonna take a while for the culvert or whatever we decide to go with. We're probably looking at a month out because of everything going on. And then I don't think they allow us to dig in the water right now because of, you know, the, the water benchmark. So we're gonna have to wait till the water goes down and then if there's certain type of wildlife in there, we're gonna, it's, so. I'm, I'm thinking towards the end of summer, fall would be the best time.
Is there a way to have a worst-case scenario number? I'm not trying to pin you guys down at all.
If I would say worst-case scenario, they make us put a box culvert there, I would say five hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars.
Geez.
Yeah.
Well, that's not bringing you in your budget this year.
Because the one on Dyer Road.
That's why, that's why we, we really wanna get more information so we can have a good discussion. And we should have some, something for the next board meeting.
That's why I don't wanna work hastily. I wanna be able to take my time and try to exercise all our options because it's very expensive.
We have a budget meeting next week and it's kind of, you know, we gotta have some kind of idea of what we need to do unless you guys are gonna, you know, pay it all with grants, but, okay.
You know, Kevin, I, I just have one other question there. You know, you, you mentioned a number of culverts there. How many culverts are we talking about that you're gonna have to really consider?
We've got that Sixteenth Avenue, we've got the golf course, the one on golf course.
Doug?
Yes.
Doug, we got someone waiting, we got our auditor waiting to get on.
Okay.
So I don't wanna, I don't wanna practice discussion too much. And we can, we can bring him back on.
That's right. I mean, it was just a question. Okay, so, so the motion in the secondary now is to transfer funds from the road account to cover the culvert on Sixteenth Ave. The cost was nine thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Okay.
Good work at getting that fixed.
Mr. Chair, if we could, if you were to see the other business that I, that I had and then the rest of the agenda. After the auditor gives his presentation, would that be okay?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna let him.
All right, so evidently there was a discussion about who was going to serve on the mediation board with the.
Doug, 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 that's gonna be after this discussion, the auditor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's go. I didn't understand.
Ron, can you hear me?
I hear you fine.
Hey, Ron, so Ron, I wanna introduce you to our, our board selection here in Madawaska. And this is Ron Smith. He's been doing our auditing for, for better part of ten years, I think. And so our audit is complete. We got that in the last week. And I've invited, you know, Ron to present his audit and also have a discussion about our unassigned balance. And then what it, what, what that picture looks like for, for Madawaska, being, you know, and so Ron. Or is yours?
I'm just gonna try to get Bill to join too, Gary. He's been waiting for a bit. For some reason, apparently like your website was down, the link, I don't know, the link wasn't working. Oh, no, he's in, he's in. He just said he was in, so. So Gary, what, what, what does everybody have in front of them? Do they have the financial statements? I can share my screen here, just to kinda hit like a couple of pages of the financial statements, get the highlights. As opposed to going through a hundred pages and making your meeting longer, a lot longer. And then talking about like the, the fund balance discussion as far as like the, the depletion and that conversation. Well, do they have a copy of the audit report in front of them or can I just share my screen and kinda get the highlights here?
We just, we just gave them, Carol printed those out. We didn't get your hard copies yet, so we printed those out today. And Carol just handed those out to the board, second of those, so I'm sure you haven't had a chance to, we got it into it, so.
I'm gonna share my screen, Gary, and just hit the highlights of it. How's that sound?
Okay, I'm gonna get it to you right now.
Yeah, so let me.
Do exactly that.
I don't see that Bill's on this Zoom right now, so.
Well, he just told me that he was, uh, was in. So, so did he, could he possibly come in through your website, Gary, maybe?
Maybe he's, our website is down right now, I think.
Let me just text him. Yeah, so I just texted him. So I thought, he said, he says I'm in the meeting, so I don't, I don't know, so I don't know what that means. But, but here's the page you all that I'm gonna start with. Really, it's the, your, your funny. And it'll lead me into my discussion on the fund balance, you know, and the conversation.
And really kind of the, the, the story and, and some advice, you know, that we'll give you, you know, behind that. What at June thirty, two thousand and twenty, the town had about six point three million dollars worth of assets. I'm in the first column general fund. I'll stay away from education. I'll just keep it solely on your town general fund.
The town had about six point three million dollars of assets against liabilities of about three point eight million dollars. I'm going down to the next subtotal. And then you've got deferred property taxes and people that actually prepaid their next taxes, next year's taxes, about six fifty-four. So you've got about four hundred, about four point four million dollars, you know, worth of things that you owe or that have been deferred. Which leaves you with a carryover balance of one point nine at June thirty, two thousand and twenty. The one of great interest that you all have, that you, you had this expectation, you know, of depletion, is about one point eight million dollars on June thirty, two thousand and twenty. Is everybody seeing where I'm coming up with these numbers on the screen? Gary, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna share the conversation now, if you don't mind me kinda getting into the, you know, where you were last year in nineteen, where you are in twenty. You know, and talking about the totality of the fund balance and getting into the depletion conversation. Uh, can I, I'm gonna continue to share my screen, Gary.
Yeah, go ahead.
And I'm, and of course, I'm pretty Zoom challenged here, so hold, hold on. Hold on, mister. So. So hold on, I'm trying to, uh, listen, Gary, it's, for some reason, I'm froze. Gary, can you, can you open what I sent you? Can, can you like un, unshare me and open what it is that I sent you, Gary, so that you can share? Because I can't, I can't for some reason share it, Gary.
Yeah, hold on. I got it right here. Can you see it?
I cannot see it, no.
Really? Okay, does everybody else see it? Okay, hold on, hold on. Uh, just a sec.
Gary, I can do it now. It just, for some reason, it just popped up to allow me to share my screen again.
Okay.
You want me to try? You wanna fire?
No, go ahead, if you can do it.
So he, here's the story, you all, of where you were in two thousand and nineteen, where you were in two thousand and twenty. And really the conversation, you know, that, that needs to take place here. You know, just as far as when we mentioned and had conversations with Gary at the end of last summer, that I think that carried into conversations about fund balance being depleted. I'd like to just get into that story. So in nineteen, you actually had a totality of fund balance in Madawaska of about three million seven seventy-four. Two point two million dollars of that, and I'm in the first column there in nineteen for everybody to follow along. Two point two million dollars of that was deferred. And what our standards say, people that don't pay property taxes, even if they don't pay the property taxes, we can still defer that. But the totality of all that, when they finally pay, because you've got a perfected interest, you know, by putting things out to lean, you know. But the delay of them paying, we have to defer it. So in two thousand and nineteen, two point three million dollars was deferred. And really, at the end of the day, we recognized about one point four, of which six twenty-five was restricted. That's, that's the education number. And then, and actually, there's some other, other things in there too. But the seven seventy was the number that was unrestricted last year. And, but the totality was three point seven. The problem is, is that the mill had not paid its entire property tax bill by June thirtieth, nor within the sixty days after that. So we had to defer payment. So it really, quite frankly, you know, uh, uh, because you didn't have access to that cash. We didn't recognize it because our standards tell us that we can't recognize it if they haven't paid it and they haven't paid it within sixty days of year end. And it's not just the mill, it's anybody's property taxes in, in Madawaska or any other municipality in our country is what that standard, you know, applies to. This is just a big number because the representation of that was the mill and they're obviously Madawaska's largest taxpayer. So your fund balance deferred and recognized last year was about three point eight. And you can see in two thousand and twenty, the totality went down to about two point one, you all. And you can see, you know, a couple of things, well, actually, the totality went down to about two point five. We're gonna talk about, you know, a tax stabilization fund, just kinda like I added to this presentation. But your financial statements say that you've got a million eight thirty-seven on line seventeen unassigned. Last year, that number was really about three point five million dollars because the mill paid late. But we could not recognize it as fund balance. We had to defer it because they hadn't paid on time. And that really stacks the conversation of the position that that puts you in for your municipality. And what I tried to do is break out the next column, column G, to say, okay. If for whatever reason going forward, and this has happened a few times, where your largest taxpayer hasn't paid on time. If we defer that money because they haven't paid on time, and I believe even, Gary, how much was the abate, the totality of that abatement last year?
About one point seven.
So that one point seven took away any financial cushion the town had if people, including the mill, don't pay their tax bill. It depleted your cushion, is the best way that I can say it. And if it happens again in the future, you know, going forward, and it's happened a few times in Madawaska, and it's happened a few times. We do a lot of mill towns in the state of Maine. It's happened there too. You know, where if that money's not recognized and we've gotta defer it, look what happens in column G, you all. You know, your surplus actually goes into the negative, uh, to the negative about five hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So therefore, it depletes not only your carryover balance. So therefore, it depletes not only your carryover balance because the payment wasn't made on time, it really is just going to kill your, uh, your fund balance as of, uh, as of whatever year that, you know, that, that your property taxpayers, including your largest one, don't pay. And I need you to understand that because if that happens again going forward, because of that abatement, you all are going to have to borrow money because I don't think you want to borrow from your downtown revitalization fund or other funds or any other funds that you have there that you set up for an exclusive purpose, you know? That abatement depleted every bit of cushion and reserve that you had in your general fund. So if that's the case now, you can see what's going to happen going forward, you all, you know, with your fund balance forever. If your taxpayers, including the mill, don't pay, it's going to put you in a deficit situation. You've got no more cushion anymore, you know, and then you're going to be resorted to borrowing because that cash won't be there. You're going to need to borrow tans, you could borrow a super tan, you know, if it's going to carry on for longer than a year, you know, uh, uh, there, there, it's going to put you in a tough spot. And column G is really kind of the portrayal, if that happens again, like it's happened, I believe, three times in the past 10-ish years since I've been involved in Madawaska. One of the first years that I got involved, I remember, you know, that the, that they were behind in their payment and I believe that there was a payment plan that was actually established by the mill and the town. So, so the mill, I'm sure is a good neighbor, I'm sure you're a good neighbor to the mill, but this is business, and if the taxes don't get paid, it's really going to put you guys in a tough pinch and cash flow is clearly going to be affected. And, and without borrowing from other funds, the only alternative source that you're going to look is for your statutory right to go borrow a tax anticipation note to pay back in one year, to get you through the year. And that actually has happened to you a few times in Madawaska. Gary, how many ti, how long have you been there, Gary?
I've been here three years.
Yeah, and I, I think, Gary, have you had to go after a tax anticipation note for any cash, cash flow problems?
We secured one last year, but we never utilized it.
Yeah.
We had one in place just in case.
Yeah.
And that was because we waited very long to give it our taxes, but, uh, but, but we didn't, we didn't tap into that one at all.
And the best way I can say it, you all, is if that happens again this year, you know, if there's a delay in payment, you're going to be forced, Gary, to probably, you know, pull the trigger, you know, on exercising bore against that tax anticipation note, which it's for. But any delay in payment will deplete your fund balance, which is going to deplete your cash, Gary, and, and board, you know, and it's going to put you into that spot. And one thing that we've been recommending to our mill towns are Rumford, or Jay, you know, Buxport, when that mill, when Verso closed in Buxport years ago. They were gradually putting money away, you guys, into a reserve fund, and, and I'll just call it for the sake of this, uh, conversation, a tax stabilization fund. And the goal is, is while you still have fund balance now, you know, is to really think, you know, about this, and I would really, as a board, if I was sitting in your chairs, have this discussion going forward, you know, for, for any future budget periods, I would think about shifting what general fund balance you have into that tax stabilization fund, you know, so that if something happens, if there's a delay in payment, God forbid, something happens to that mill, whatever the reason is that puts a financial strain on the mill, which is the taxpayer, which is going to put a financial straitment on the town, you've actually got a pot of money set aside to deal with that and allow you, is the best way I can say it, to carry on business, you know, where you're not really forced, you know, to, uh, to look at things, you know, with, uh, you know, in the, in the worst case scenario, because you've prepared for that day for it to happen. And what I set aside is the initial piece of the conversation. If I were you all, I'd start with 60 days of your operating budget going into that stabilization fund for that reason, which approximates 480 or a half a million, 480,000 or a half a million dollars. Some municipalities, and it's being discussed, and I really don't want to get into those details because it's still being discussed with some of the municipalities that, that, that carry the same, that carry the same, you know, situation in their town because they have mills operating in their town. Some, some municipalities are trying to protect where they're actually trying to bank one year or an equivalent of the real estate and personal property tax bill, you know, for, uh, you know, for the largest taxpayer being in the mill. And I've seen numbers anywhere from a million and a half, or we can talk about your, your number, I believe it's $2.3 million, Gary, correct? I've got the legends all in here that kind of reference the math, you all. But in this case, I believe, I believe the paper mill, uh, is a, Twin River, Barry, Gary, sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, I believe that their annual payment now after the ba, after the abatement is about $2.3 million. I can't sit here in good faith and conscience and tell you guys to put that money away, you don't even have it. And if they don't pay, it's not even a reality for Madawaska. But what the reality is, is I think it's a conversation you all need to have. And if I'm in your chairs, I'd be start thinking about this tax stabilization, you know, problem, you know, a, 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 a fund, this alternative, you know, for the town. And I'd really focus on that and I'd be more than happy to continue to talk about that with you all and Gary in further detail. But I really need you to understand, you know, the, uh, you know, the, um, you know, the, 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 I'm sure I'm sharing my screen, let me just get out of these emails, you guys, sorry. Uh, I, I really need you to understand the depletion of the fund balance, you know, and the fact that any delay in any payment is going to put you in a deficit situation, is going to put you in a cash flow problem. And I probably would stop right there and say, Gary, do you have any questions? Because I know we've talked a lot about it and I would ask your board the same thing.
I'm, I'm all set, you and I and Carol have talked quite a bit on this and I would invite the board to, uh, to question you, uh, with, with their thoughts.
See anything coming from the floor here?
It's a lot, it's a lot to absorb, folks, and if you guys want some time to think about it and Gary, if there's any future conversations, just let me know whatever role you want us to play in it.
Okay.
And Gary, I can shoot you up to a couple of your brethren towns that are in the same position that you are and going through the same thing, and maybe that would help, you know, as they're digging deep. They're a little bit more further along in the process, obviously, than, than like this meeting here tonight and discussion. But I could probably send you to a couple of your peers, Gary, so that you can get some intel to see what they're doing.
Yeah.
And that's exact, this is exactly what they're doing, folks, this is exactly what they're doing because their fund balance has been depleted as well, so. And any delay in payment in theirs is going to basically have this, a similar effect, you know, as it would have in Madawaska and really deplete your cash flow. And that's about the biggest highlight that I wanted to hop in, just so that everybody could be clear, everybody could understand the depletion, everybody could understand what alternative measures are in place, but more importantly, just start talking about a process, you know, really, that's available to you and probably starting to squirrel some money away, you all, going forward, and really looking at a balance and a policy that makes sense for Madawaska to make it yours. And just because it may, may work in Rumford or Buxport, you know, or, uh, or Jay, you know, may not mean that it works for Madawaska, so like I say, make it work for you, you know, and whatever role you need for us, and, and Gary, we can pass you up the line to a couple of your peers here that are going through the same thing that you are, that we just talked about right now, so.
Appreciate that, Ron.
Yeah. And, 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 and that, that's pretty much the highlights, you know, of this thing, you guys. We talked about some, because you got all that wastewater money, you know, uh, this past year for your infrastructure, there was a single audit. I think that because the uniform guidance changed about three to four years ago and actually changed last August, we gave Carol and Gary some advice on upgrading your procurement policies that, uh, you know, that certainly can be worked on to, 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 to mirror, you know, any future, you know, um, uh, projects like wastewater. You know, uh, there were some delays and like bank racks, but really nothing, you all, that would raise my hand and say, you know, fire in Madawaska, not at all, I've had to cry fire, Madawaska hasn't been one of our municipalities for sure. And, uh, and, and like I say, I think that even going through the transition, this audit took some time to get through this year, you know, but it was a team effort and there was a lot of people that had their hands in this thing for many, many, many reasons. And I think that COVID certainly, um, uh, posed a lot of challenges as well. But at the end of the day, here we are, your audit was filed timely, you know, we can sit here and have these conversations and, 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 and I would argue, you know, again, you know, there was nothing that rose to the level of saying, we really need to, you know, we really need to talk about this and address it. I think that the thing that you guys really need to talk about going forward is that kind of a, a policy, you know, or a fund balance change to put some money away, you know, just in case, you know, something happens again with your largest taxpayer.
All right, board members, uh, you have any other questions or any questions at all?
Right now, we're, we're good here, uh, Gary and Ron.
All right, so, um, I got out of sharing, Ron, it looks like we're, we're done. Want to thank you again for, for working with us on the, on the audit and, um, you know, and to thank you and I'll thank you in front of my board, just like I thank you last week with Carol and I for letting us press you a little bit on the, uh, on the undesigned fund, the unassigned number. You know, we thought that it was going to be less than that, but moved in a good direction. Uh, but we're not out of the woods yet, I guess is, is basically the, the narrative here with, uh, in respect to our finance.
You've got some work to do.
All right, so that's it, um, we're going to go back to our regular agenda or other items on the agenda?
All set with me, Gary? We're good, thanks, Ron, everybody, you all be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I do have a question under this item, but it's more for, for comment.
Go ahead, Lori.
Well, I just, I just want to say, you know, I'm sure that I would have many questions, but I can't be given a 130-page audit and then, like, I, I can't. I, I want the opportunity to go through all of this and then if I have questions, maybe I could either email them to Carol or, um, you know, I, I just, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking like the public's looking at this and we've had this major audit and nobody's asking questions, but we just got it, like I, I, I need to read it to see if I have questions and I, you know, I understand the numbers he's talking about, but there's a lot in here to digest for us to really know if, if we have questions, I guess, I just want to make that point.
Yeah, and that's a good point.
Because I, I'm sitting here feeling kind of dumb, really, and thinking, you know, I should have questions, but, um.
Gary, I, I, I do have a question here about, um, how and when the mill does pay their property tax and, and maybe I misunderstood what was said, but it always seemed like they paid their taxes pretty much on time in December. And, and we're kind of hearing something slightly different here tonight and I'm not sure if I just misunderstood, um, what was said or, or certainly we're finding out that the case is, is, is not, not.
So there, there, I think Ron was speaking generally, not necessarily, um, Madawaska or, um, Twin Rivers paper in respect to, yeah, he's basically talking about paper mill towns. Um, and that's, that's a big, uh, a lot of our, a lot of our, you know, the 40, almost 40% of our tax base, right? So that's conceivably a lot of cash flow tied up right there. Since I've been here, the mill's always paid their tax on time. We had the, the year which didn't pay the contested amount of assessed value, uh, the, the taxes associated with that. But I think in the past, prior to this, the ownership of, of Twin Rivers now, that there were some financial hardships back in the day that the mill was, um, late in paying their taxes. But that was a long, we're talking in probably a decade ago, I don't know exactly if I was before or how it was where, where we're here. So it's not, it's not the issue, it's not an issue right now.
Okay. So anything else to be discussed about this article? Uh, there is no action on this, this evening, so we're just going to table it. Um, Carol, did you have anything you wanted to advise the board on? Is there anything there that you wanted to say or?
Nope, just that my door is open, if you have any questions on it, I'm more than happy to answer them if I can.
Yeah. So, so Lori, just to go back to what you were saying about, you know, getting, getting the audit, we just, just literally got it last week.
Yeah.
And, um, we, I, I think Ron wanted to have the opportunity to talk to you about this before, you know, as we're working on our budget, we're, we're in, we're in that sixth inning of our budget process and he knows it, and I think he really wanted to get a chance to talk to you guys. Um, so the timing was, was tight, okay? So, um, you know, normally you would get that a little bit sooner and a little bit later to, to go over it, but, um, that's not how it happened this time.
Thank you, it, it wasn't really a complaint, it was just kind of a thing in the form so that people watching don't think that we're not even bothering with this.
Right, which is an important point, I mean, it, it literally got put on, in front of us here a half an hour ago.
Yeah.
All right. So let's move, uh, move on back to, uh, other business, again, uh, with Mr. Care, uh, Care. We, we had a discussion, I guess, the way it was explained to me, about who might want to serve on that mediation board and, and two names were given, but I guess we really need to have a motion to, uh, to accept the two members, myself and, and Jason. Was there something else that we needed to discuss about that issue, Gary? I don't think there's anything else other than, um.
No, I mean, we, we're both, we have a scheduled mediation next week on that case and, uh, I know that, you know, we have a non-year of, who would be, going to mediation, but I think it would be good for us to just formally point, uh, a couple of board members to sit down to join me in our turn, um, in that mediation.
Well, I'll make a motion that Doug and Jason attend, and I will second.
Any other discussion?
I just want to make the point that I'm not sure if Dan would want to and I cannot, because first of all, I'm going to be done in June, so this is going to go on for, it has to be somebody who's here for a while, I think.
Sure.
And then my employer is also named in some of this, so I don't think it's good for me. And then I think you.
I was involved.
You were involved, so you don't.
I'd rather not, so.
Okay, all in favor? Oppose? All right. Onto Article 2. Consider meeting minutes of March 2, March 17, 23, and 30. I have the motion.
Make motion to accept the meeting minutes.
Second.
I will second.
Anybody have any discussions about those last meetings? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carries. Article 3, consider the treasurer's warrants. The motion.
I'll motion.
Second.
Any questions?
No.
All in favor? Article carries. Article 4, presentation of. Our, um, year 20 annual audit, we just finished that one. Article 5, reconsider the real estate abatement request for account number 531.
So you have, uh, you have a request for abatement in that account, uh, for property that was, uh, the house was demolished on June 6th. Our assessing year starts April 1st, so the assessor, Louis Cousins, has provided, uh, as his, your assessing agent has provided you the deal on that, uh, in his opinion, uh, that he was denied the abatement request, uh, but he defers obviously to you because you are the board assessors, he's your assessing agent. So with that said, um, the amount of the abatement would be, I'm reading, I don't have a hard copy, um, so I'm looking off, off my phone here, um. The value of the house that was demolished.
Must be what?
The house value would.
Eight, is it eight?
The house value is at $22,800, so that's the amount of, uh, length, uh, property value that you want to have related as part of this request.
I don't see an actual amount other than the total, um, taxes for the property and the building here of eight. building here of eight, eight hundred and.
Yeah, it's not, it's not broken down, it's just. Uh, hold on, I can put it out here, but just give me a second.
Well, and we have two tax bills, so there's also one for three twenty-four forty-seven.
Yes.
So.
That's the, that's the land?
Well, there's a land and building value there too, right?
But that's a different lot though, it's a different map.
So why is that, so why do we have, why do we have that one?
They just include all of these tax lots. But the one you questioned is the, the first one.
Right. Well, I need a motion to discuss. What?
Don't necessarily need a motion to discuss.
That's about, roughly, oh, sorry, wait.
No, no, I, I'm, I'm gonna make the motion that we prorate it, I understand that that's not what is being suggested here, but I, I'm gonna make that motion so we can discuss that because I had discussion with Manol and I, so I'm making a motion that we prorate it and charge him for the time that the thing, the building was there, till June six.
I will second that motion.
Right.
So.
So we have a motion to prorate his taxes as the building was there for the time, the time considered.
Yeah, but question, I mean, my understanding is it's April first, April first, so the building was there the entire year, it was torn down two months after the assessing date, so it was there the full year.
Right, so here, here's what I've been told which concerns me, okay? And I think Manol can, can speak better to it, but several people have told me that in the past, because, so for business equipment, it's different, there's a seven oh six form and there's, there's a, a means for, for the people to, to say, you know, what changes they've had, in the past, over the years, they always prorated it and allowed people that, that whatever, I don't even know what I'm saying, go ahead, Manol.
No, you're saying, you're writing down the law.
I mean, if it's always been that way and we have the authority to do it, I don't know why, if precedent was set and we doing it twenty or thirty years.
I'm not gonna say that you have to, I'm not gonna say that you have the authority, state law's clear, April one to April one, but, you know, it's, boards have act, board of assessors do act in a different way, not just in Madawaska, it, it, it can happen that they do prorations based on the amount of time the building was still on the property, so I just want you to know that the law's pretty clear, that's why Louis, your assessing agent, recommended to deny it, because he's following the law and the law is set upon, on just value within property is vested in the legislature, not in the board of assessors, you guys are just the agents of the legislature when you're acting as an assessor, so.
I just feel.
But the building was there from sort of the entire year.
Right, and that, that's what I'm saying, if, if they would have torn the building down in March, then yeah, we prorate a month because it was gone for a month before April first, if you want to prorate, but they clearly say here it was torn down two months after the assessment date, which is that, that year, so it was up there the full year, from April first to April first, that building existed, it was only torn down two months after the year.
Okay, so what am I not getting? Manol?
No, we follow it, in the past and it has been done, that the board will actually prorate what's left, you gotta use some, I know there's the law, but there's also common sense.
Yeah, but what are you gonna prorate? It was there the year. I can understand if they tore it down in March, let's say, but they forgot to tell us, then yeah, we can prorate from March to April, okay? But the fact is, the building was there the full year.
We're gonna charge him from March, uh, from.
From April first.
April, May and June, and then the building was gone.
Yes.
No, but that's next year.
That's the following, that's the following year.
We're, we're, we're charging him for taxes.
But he only got the tax bill, it's fault. So most people don't know the law that April first is the, the, the date of the state that runs, most people don't know that, so you have to kind of do things to help the taxpayer too, so I mean, if he goes this way, he can always file a property abatement at this point, if he can't do it the right way, if he can't afford the taxes that supposedly he's owed. Either way. We're just adding more burden to this person. That's, you gotta use some common sense in this as well, the law is there, but the law can be, and it has been done in the past.
You know, cases like this, if we open up the books in, in this manner, can leave us to face a lot of issues like this and I don't know that I'm ready to do anything like that, if there was a consideration here that the building came down within that year and there was a few months there that we had to consider, I, I would do so, but this building was there that full tax year, from April to April, the following year, yeah, now we're gonna be looking at, at adjusting his, his, his taxes on that, on that building, but, but today, I mean, I, I, I don't know these people and I'm not ready to open up any, any kind of, an abatement here on that, on that building.
I mean, I, I kind of do see their point because taxes are paid ahead for next, like you're paying, your tax bill now is gonna pay for this coming year, right? So I can see there where, yeah, this coming year's only been up there for three months, yeah, too much, whatever.
Of course, there we.
But the way that we have it written, I mean, if we, if we do this for one person, we get it done for other people, we've already denied tax abatements for people who are late in submitting information, so why did we decline it for one, but we're gonna accept it for another? You know, that's kind of the way I'm looking at it.
Well, like I said, I mean, the history is that when it's a, an equipment tax, it's a little different and there's form for that and when it's a taxpayer payer that's struggling, like, and it's a personal property, then that's different, I guess, for a home. At, at this point, I'm, I mean, I'm not willing to change my motion and we're, I don't know if we're two to two, if we're gonna like table it and I either need some more, like, if, if I'm gonna change my mind, I really need to do some more homework then, you know?
So Laurie, so the, did you have something else, Jay?
Well, yeah, I mean, according to bylaws, if, if the motion fails, the abatement fails because the, the motion is to, to do the abatement, so if the motion fails, the abatement fails, it's not a motion to table the item, it's a motion to do something.
So the motion, I believe at this point is, is, is to prorate the taxes on this particular building? And you have a second?
You know, Mike, are we still discussing?
Yeah, we can still discuss.
I mean, like I says, I see both sides, I definitely do, and I agree with you guys, I just, I just want everybody to understand that if we do this, if we accept this tax abatement, we can't deny the next one who comes, we can't, you know what I mean? We have to play fair, we have to treat every taxpayer the same way, so by accepting this tonight, we're setting a precedence that we're going to do this for every taxpayer who comes up to us and, and asks for this, so if somebody keeps that building on the land and the whole pay and says, huh, April second, I'm gonna tear down my building and they're only gonna bill me for one day of, of taxes, you know? Not everybody's gonna take advantage of that, but I just want everybody to understand that we're setting a precedence if we do this.
Well, if somebody tears down a building April second and we're not willing to give them an abatement, there, I have a problem with that, I mean, that's a bad example.
It's just an example.
I mean, I don't know how often this happens, it's just, you know, I, I guess it always was accepted before and, and why now it's not, I mean, is it just a different?
Is it something that he, they didn't understand the tax, the, the year, year to year, April to April, is it something?
Most people don't know this.
So is that what, is that what the issue is here?
Yeah, most people don't know this, most people don't know a lot of things that are required and we assume, like the veterans exemption, a homestead exemption, nobody knows this, unless you're involved in this, who the heck knows these things?
Well, it's also the responsibility of people to know that, ignorance of the law is not, I know, is not.
Well, sometimes you need to help.
And I agree.
You have to help your taxpayers somehow.
I agree, but we, we just have to make sure that we can't use the excuse, well, they didn't know it's, for, for everything, you know?
But a lot of people don't, they don't have access to, they don't have access to the internet and they rely on somebody giving them the information, we're living in a town that's older, that may not even know these things, so we have to use some common sense and, I don't know.
Yeah, I agree, we have to, I agree a hundred percent, we just gotta make sure we watch our words and, and if we say, well, they didn't know, so we're gonna accept it, somebody can come tomorrow and says, well, I didn't know the speed was forty-five miles an hour, the cop gave me a sixty mile an hour ticket, get rid of my ticket, so we just gotta make sure we're careful with the wording and say, we're doing this abatement because we're prorating it and all this, not because they didn't know, you know what I mean?
So that goes like by going, giving them a homestead exemption as well, they didn't know, but they were giving them a homestead exemption, so what's the difference with this scenario?
There is no difference, I just, I just want to make sure we're careful with our wording.
Right.
You know what I mean? Like I says, I'm not against this, I'm just, this is just discussion, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
I understand, I understand your point, I understand a hundred percent what the law is, I just feel like we sit here in a position that we have to have a little bit of a heart to for the taxpayer, I mean, when we had our presentation from, was it Aristic Area Aging or?
Agency on Aging.
Agency on, I mean, she explained the age of the population here in Madawaska and I look at, you know, my parents and older people that while they're trying to navigate their, their healthcare and they're trying to navigate insurance policies and they're trying to, and if someone's not there for them, like, you even know if, if an older person goes to the hospital or the doctor and, and someone's not with them, sometimes they don't even understand what they're being told to do and so I think part of the responsibility of the board is also to find a way to, to care a little bit like that and yeah, it opens a can of worms and it puts people in a position going forward that it could cause some issues, but I feel like if it was done in the past for years and years, that I don't see why we couldn't, I mean, how often does it happen that somebody tears down a whole house in the middle of the year, you know?
My biggest concern, my biggest concern and, and is as boards change, okay, their philosophy on abatements and, and, and granting abatements like this, such as this one, can change, right? And so you might have a board and you have to say no aid and, and then two years later you're gonna have a board that says absolutely, and then that's that inconsistency, that is why there's state law, okay? And so in, as far as, as giving preference over one person or another on the, on the abatement request, it's irrespective of who was sitting on board at the time that the abatement request was announced, the board is the board, it doesn't matter who's on that board, it's, it's seen as the board, okay? And so my only concern is consistency over a period of time, because people will come back and say, well, we gave it to this one, we didn't give it to that one, prior board did this, prior board did that, and, and that causes hardship and it causes, you know, confusion and, and nobody wants that, and so if state law is there, it's not always, it's not always a question, you know, but it's consistent and, and some, some might say consistent is fair, so I'm not, it's not my decision on this abatement request, it's, it's up to the board, my, I just want you to know that my concern is consistency on the abatement requests and precedents.
Go ahead Laurie.
I think if this was a property abatement, I would actually be a little more hesitant just because in poverty abatements, you look at the person's financials and sometimes we see some misuse and it's harder to, but to me, this is cut and dry, it was torn down in June and, and, I mean, I mean, okay, like, if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass, but that's not, how, what, how do we, I mean, I guess we need to vote, right?
You know, I, I, I always will try to lead towards seniors, especially folks that might have inconsistencies of language and don't understand or are not aware and, and I want to give them every, every, every opportunity that I can, in a situation like this, I think that we're just going to create a lot more problems for ourselves, either currently or, or down the road, I mean, it, it just, it's unfortunate that it's happened this way, but I, I just can't, I can't prorate this in my mind tonight. Anybody else? All in favor?
Can I?
All in favor of doing the prorate on this article, Article five, raise your hand. Opposed? All right, so we are gonna prorate. Gary, had you come up with a figure there?
Uh, yeah, the value of the, hold on, the value of the, the tax bill on the, on the property building was about five hundred and forty-three dollars, so if you were gonna prorate that to, to, two months, so, by twelve times two. Hold on, I just lost this, what, what was that number?
I, I, I'm thinking it's about seventy-five bucks, but, the what, the figure of the property itself, eight hundred and fifty dollars and two, two cents?
No, wasn't that much.
The building?
Hold on, let me add that.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, that was the, that was the land too, yeah.
Twenty-two thousand eight hundred, so what, the building?
You want to know the, the, the building value, Gary?
No, I, I know the building value, I, I had this, I had this figured out, twenty-three thousand and one.
Ninety dollars and sixty-four cents.
It's five hundred and forty-three dollars of, of the taxes on.
Twelve months.
The building that's no longer there, so divided by twelve.
Divided by twelve times.
Forty-five, forty-five dollars a month.
Times two.
Does it sound right?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, Carol, Carol just gave us a figure of ninety dollars and fifty-four cents.
Sixty-four.
Yeah, that's correct.
Sixty-four, sixty-four, six four.
So that would be the balance that remaining on that, we'll, we'll figure out the, the amount of the abatement, the dollar was, if you, if there would still be a balance on that, of about ninety dollars and sixty cents.
And next year, when you have heartburn over this, Gary, because five people come and ask you for it, my phone number will have been changed.
There's other ways to, to get in touch with you, Laurie.
You know, this is one of those, those, those issues that.
That's hard.
Yeah, that really tears at us. Okay, let's move on to Article six. Consider sewer abatement request for account number two zero seven eight five.
You, you want me to give you a rundown on that for your motion?
Yep.
Okay, so that's, this is for Ballard Realty Associates, there was a water break over there, the water district has provided us a, an indication, an explanation of what water was that, extra water consumption over there, so we have the abatement request for the amount of four thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars, that is not water that went to the sewer, that's water that went on the ground or in the ground, so it would be my recommendation that we improve it.
I will motion that we approve this sewer abatement request for account two zero seven eight five, the amount of four thousand seven hundred forty-nine dollars.
Second.
Second, any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article seven, consider property tax abatement request for account number one seven zero.
So this one right here is, is a, somebody who had applied for a homestead exemption, it was here at the town office, it wasn't in the right file, it, so therefore it wasn't applied to the last tax bill and now my recommendation would be to, to, uh, this abatement of six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. to the last tax bill and now my recommendation would be to approve uh, this abatement of six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
I will second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article Eight, to consider property tax abatement request for account one zero seven seven.
Same situation, uh, another homestead exemption that was uh, in another folder. I, it wasn't applied to the bill. Um, and so it's again for six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. It'd be my recommendation to approve.
Motion? Second? Any other debate? All in favor? Opposed? Carries. Article Nine, to consider property abatement, tax abatement request for account number two seven five nine.
So the situation on this one is uh, the property owner still owns the house, money airs up. And I think what happened was the assessor, the assessing agent from the rent deed on that. Uh, it was, it was confusing and we didn't, uh, they basically kicked them out of the homestead program. Uh, when you have um, when you have people that, you know, do life estates and things like that, uh, and they stay in their home, but they give the property to their, their, to their kids under their life estate, uh, that kicks them out of the homestead program. So um, it's not exactly the case here, but in essence, they do still own, the people that have applied this abatement still own that property. Uh, and so it'd be my recommendation to approve the abatement request of six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second. Any, any other questions? Any other issues? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article Ten, to consider property tax abatement request for account number one four five three.
Same situation. All of these were in the, in that folder. That was uh, that got lost. So the homestead uh, application was received on July eighteenth. Uh, and therefore they are entitled to their homestead exemption, valued at six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. It'd be my recommendation to approve.
Motion? Second?
Second.
Other questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carries. Article Eleven. Consider the termination of the current Endico land lease and new request for land lease agreement.
So um, roughly a year ago, uh, we entered, or just less than a year ago, we entered into a lease agreement with uh, Dave Willett, who wanted to lease part of the Endico site, which is our spreading facility, uh, spreading site that we no longer, we no longer use, but we still have to redeem. There are some fields there that we do not, we never spread on, but it's part of the same tax map, it's part of the same property. And so uh, in the past, we've always had handshake agreements with farmers, with, you know, various farmers to uh, come in and provide services. We have to mow and plow and disking and hound and dead, we certainly have to mow every year. Um, and so, and that's part of our license agreement to pay for those spreading, spreading sites. Um, so we entered into an agreement uh, with Dave. Dave was interested in renting about thirty acres to farm up there. Uh, in exchange, they would provide the mowing uh, and, and the field, uh, plowing, disking and reseeding, and then after that mowing every year in exchange for, so it was sort of a borrowing lease agreement. Uh, Dave is no longer going to be uh, using that piece of land. Uh, so we would, I would like to end this agreement, one with, uh, as we have others that have expressed interest in using this, this piece of land, the same way, I mean, the same uh, agreement it will.
So do I have a motion to end this agreement as we see it in front of us?
I made a motion to terminate.
We have a second? All in favor?
I, I'm, I'm just waiting because I'm gonna, I'm gonna get abstained. I, I abstained when we um, uh, took, uh, agreed to the agreement to begin with, just because, you know, I work with Dave every day. We've had discussions about this. So I'm gonna abstain from getting out of it as well.
So you made the motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I second, yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Discuss first or?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. More discussion, yes, sorry.
My only concern is we're, we're ending the lease early, so are we made, have we been made whole as far as if he was supposed to mow this year and didn't or, or whatnot? Are we gonna be incurring extra expenses to go out there and mow it because the lease is ending or?
Not, not necessarily.
Good luck, yeah, good teamwork.
The new, the new, i- if we do enter into a new agreement with uh, with uh, somebody else, uh, they're gonna do that for us. So I don't wanna see that we lost anything here.
Okay, go ahead.
Mike, go ahead.
As far as the, the ending of this agreement, that was Dave Willett's action, not mine. He gave me a call uh, early on. He said he may know someone that would take his place. And the conversation that took place was, to me, my focus has always been having those thirty acres that surround, where we were land applying, have those brought up. Because the people that did it before really massacred that land. So it makes it very difficult to just do brush cutting. So, and Dave promised me he would do that. So, but when he called me, and he said he didn't have a chance last year and he was supposed to perform it this spring. But that, but then before he had a chance to do that, he ended the agreement. And that's the way it's, I believe that's the way it's worded, that either party can end the agreement. There's no, but so that, that's basically what happened. I got a phone call and then I notified my town manager that Dave had called and he was no longer interested in farming that land, but he knew of another party that maybe. And that's what I informed my town manager. And indeed, my town manager informed me there was another party that might be interested. And this is how this has all transpired.
Yeah. No, I'm just looking to make sure that we're not gonna be stuck putting work into there because he had, let's say, you know, if he ended it early, was there something he should have done to make the land usable by, again?
He, he did not, again, I, we were, we both were under the impression he was gonna have the ability to do it this year. But he did not. He did not satisfy his side of the agreement. But again, he promised he would have done it this year, but he did. But he said that, uh, the, the person that he was recommending, he was going to ensure that that was gonna be complied with.
Right, I don't, I don't wanna muddy up, I don't wanna muddy up the waters here, but the reason why I asked the board to end the agreement is because it's formal. It's done. It's not, it's not done by phone call. Uh, and so I wanted them to do that. There's nothing in the lease agreement as of, allows subletting or, or reassembling. And so in order to have a clean uh, transition from one lease agreement to the next, I wanted the board to formally end this agreement and then we're moving on. I think that, uh, I think that even though the work, the plowing and the mowing didn't get done last year, uh, it's gonna get done this year and we're gonna, we're gonna be able to change. So for me, it's a moot point. Uh, I think we can just move on. And, and, and I can inform you of uh, the two individuals, the two farmers that are interested in the, the Endico site. And you guys can decide for yourselves uh, who, you know, who to award the lease to. So I'll go, I'll go on and just inform you. So, but we were approached by uh, Lauren Farms. Uh, Steve, Steve Warren, son Eric, is interested in leasing it. Uh, we were also approached by uh, Hellier Farms out of Frenchville. They have land up in, up in, I think it's, it was about Su, Norman LaBazee Farm. So they are farming in Madawaska too. Uh, they had inquired about leasing the land as well. Uh, the Lawrence bought the abutting land to the Endico site, this little dual farm. Uh, and so they're gonna be right there. Uh, they're, it's gonna be in their backyard for farming, just farming those, so. That, it's up to you guys. Uh, there's no dollars, trends, that transpire, disagreement, it's harder to agree with, um, if you will. Uh, we let them farm thirty acres. Uh, and in return, they redeem our fields, our spreading sites for us. That's, that's pretty much the, the narrative on that.
Yes, Lori?
Was there a vote on the last?
No, not yet.
No, so we, we have to vote to get rid of this and then I'll make a.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
All right, so I think we did, we did have one motion, all right? We didn't have a second yet.
Yep, we have a motion and a second.
And a second. So any other discussion?
No.
All in favor of ending this agreement? One abstained? Okay. Motion carries.
And I would make a motion that we um, allow the Lawrence to have the field just because they're Madawaska taxpayers, am I correct? Gary, because there's no, I mean, there's no way to choose unless we put them in a hat. So if the Lawrence are taxpayers, the Lawrence are taxpayers in Madawaska?
They're whole, whole farmers are taxpayers in those.
Okay, wait, then.
The, the Lawrence are life long visitors.
Erase that, not at all. Okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll leave that to, to, to um.
How would we ever decide that then?
Yep. I guess it's gonna be our price. We'll decide on what the cost, what the.
There's no dollars, no dollars. There's no dollars involved at all. There's no bid.
They just take care of the property.
Yeah, there's no bid, there's no.
So how are you gonna do that, Gary? You're just gonna, you're just gonna take one?
He wants us to do it.
Don't put it on me. You can't put this on people, you know. No, look, you know, to me.
Yeah.
You, you have both, both of those, those farmers are, are good uh, farmers, are good disking people in, in, in both communities. Uh, so I have no concerns with either of them. Uh, I think the Lawrence being uh, abutters uh, to the Endico site makes them the, the leading candidate, if you will. Because they're gonna be there and their, their property applies ours, right? So you know that just that in and of itself, to me, would put them at the lead. Uh, for who we would award the lease lease to.
I concur.
Go ahead, Lori.
Were they not the first ones who asked as well?
What's that?
Are they, are, are, were they not the first ones to ask or?
Those were the ones that.
Hell, Hellier said he wanted uh, by phone to me a few months back. So they weren't first to inquire, I guess. But I don't think, I don't think they understood um, the arrangement that we had there. They just, we had some land up there that they were interested in uh, farming. But I explained to them what we had for an agreement with, with Mr. Willett. Um, so.
But the Lawrence had come to you first, before, no, okay.
No, the Lawrence were suggested by Mr. Willett.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're, we're being fair.
No, I, I completely agree. We need to be on the same page.
You know, I, as I see this, I mean, it, there's no, there's no money exchange here and, and it's, it's, it's not like we're going to hurt somebody if we say that we accept one farmer over the other. So to me, it really doesn't make any difference who we approve. It seems like any of them would work, so at this point, I mean, it sounds like the Lawrence are, are abutting and they're adjacent. It would be more sense for them to do it, but um, it doesn't really matter to me. Go ahead, Mark.
Again, I just wanna reemphasize uh, that my focus is not, I need someone who can do it. And it doesn't matter who it is and it's not about the money. It's a bartering agreement that we entered that both parties benefit. My department benefits and whoever farms the land benefits. I'm satisfied. Like you say, there's no, it was never ever talked about money exchange or it was just.
So how does a farmer benefit? How does it, how does a farmer benefit with this?
Excuse me?
How does the farmer benefit with this?
He gets to grow the crop at those other acres that were now land applied, so whatever yield he gets.
So, so what are we talking about there? Maybe fifty acres in behind and around that building?
Nope, he can't plant on our acreage.
No, I mean, wait, just in.
Yeah, there's about thirty more, thirty or forty more acres.
Oh, so.
And in the past, Mr. Pitt Monet used to farm that land and it was also an exchange of that sorts where he assisted with the land uh, maintenance and he would grow crops on the other. And he, whatever yield and whatever he got from that, good for him. And that's basically what we entered. This is basically what this is. So whoever has awarded this, but I do agree with the town manager that it only, in my mind, it only makes sense. And it almost guarantees to some degree that uh, if the Lawrence do it, receive the agreement, they're right there. Their equipment will be there. There'll be less of a expense on their part to make it happen. Take care of those thirty acres that I need to have taken care of, per license, part of a compliance issue. We don't have the equipment to do it. The town does not have equipment any longer to, to take care of those fields. So this was a viable and is a viable option to get them cheap.
I, I guess I hit the picture now. Okay, yes, Jason?
I mean, we hire, we hire our department heads for a reason because they know best. So I make a motion that we approve the Lawrence to farm, or take over this lease agreement, or start a new lease agreement.
Is there a second to that motion? We have a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. That was what, Article Eleven? Article Twelve, to consider request proposals for town audit for three years beginning year twenty-one.
So we, we, we have gone out to RFP quite some time. Uh, and it's good to do that every few years and, uh, you know, when you bring on an auditing firm, it's a big job. They gotta, they gotta bring all your data in, build your, build their file on, on you, on the town. And so we typically look for, it'll be three years, uh, at least for these auditing proposals. So we received two, we received one from RH, uh, R Smith and Company, which is a firm that's been auditing us for the last better part of a decade. Uh, the gentleman had just presented it to us earlier in this meeting. Um, his proposal uh, for audit is uh, for, for, this coming year fifteen thousand. Following year twenty twenty-two fifteen thousand. And the following year, the two twenty-three fifteen thousand. And if we had a single audit, uh, which is when we get federal money, uh, in excess of the million dollars that we need, that triggers a single audit, uh, that's it, three thousand dollars. This, this was a single audit year, uh, because of all the funds that we received from, from the government for our wastewater project. Um, and we also received a uh, a proposal from Chester and Carney in Blottress. Um, first year is twelve thousand five hundred, second year, um, of twenty twenty-two thirteen thousand and third year thirteen thousand five hundred. Um, just to kind of give you uh, um, some history on, on the, on the audits for the town. Uh, it's, it's, it's a long process. It takes time. You know, we'd really like to get our audits a little bit sooner than, than we, like we did this year. COVID certainly didn't help. Um, and old Ron, uh, one, one of Ron's auditors is Nancy, Nancy, I forget her, her last name, but she actually lives in Frederickton. Uh, Ron's company is out of Rock City. Uh, but she lives in Frederickton, so COVID made the town audit longer this year. The other part that's, that's tough with the audit is uh, the school is in the apartment of the town, okay? The school is not a district. And so all of the school's funds pass through us, okay? And it's been very difficult having two different auditing companies, okay? One for the school and one for the town. And one's often, one is often wait, one is often waiting from the, for the other for information, okay? And the finance director and, and myself are, are finding ourselves spending a lot of time uh, um, getting information into the hands of the auditors. Uh, sometimes it, it was already given, um, sometimes we're waiting on, on the school, sometimes the school waiting on us. And so I know that Chester and Carney does the school's audit. They've been with the school for, I don't know how many years, but it's quite some time. Uh, and Ron Smith, like I said, has been um, with the town of Madawaska for quite some time. And Ron Smith, like I said, has been with the town at Madawaska for quite some time. Both good auditing companies, RH Smith, there's a lot of audits up here, they're all the way upstate, they have a lot of expertise in mill towns. Chester and Carney, they're, they're good as well, they do serve a lot in this town, so. Both of these are our, are, are, are good competent firms to do the town's audit, in my opinion. Right now, the, the benefit, I guess, to having one auditor that does the same with the school and the town. Would, would be that, you know. The information would, wouldn't have to go from one auditor to the next, because they each gotta plug their information back and forth. So that would be helpful to the finance office, okay? And then the cost, of course, is always a factor. Carol, do you want to add in?
Um.
I think Carol has a lot of experience with Chester and Carney because she came from the school, so she can talk more about them than I can.
I do, and I've worked with both firms being for the school, I've worked with Tim for the last twenty years that I was there. I would say he's top notch. And it was, it was like just speeding up what Gary said. That it would make it a lot easier for our audit to go through more smoothly and more timely. Because you have one audit, when I was working for the school, I did an audit for Chester Carney. And then had to do every, give them all the information we had given to Carney. Back to him, so we were going through two audits for the same purpose. So I think it would be a lot better if you could have one auditor for both school and the town.
Okay, well, oh, yes, Lauren.
So I'll make the motion that we accept Chester Carney as the auditor.
Second. Second. Any, any other discussion?
I just wanna say, I have experience with them too and I, I think they're very, very good and I really trust them and, I mean, it's cheaper and. They're within the, they're local, you know, closer, so.
Anybody else? All in favor? Close? Motion carries.
Gary, did Gary second on that?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't, sorry, I didn't see it.
Article thirteen. To consider union labor negotiations with the Madawaska Police Department slash New England Police Benevolent Association Incorporated. Executive session recommended one MRS A subsection four oh five six D. I have a motion. We have a second? All in favor? We're in executive session at six twenty seven.
I've done that before.
We're good?
Yeah.
Board, why?
I'll make the motion to come out of the executive session.
I'll second.
All in favor? So we're now out of executive session at 7:10. I now need a motion to accept the police department's contract.
I make a motion to accept the police department contract as so written in the newest.
As so written, thank you. Do you have a second? Any other discussion? No, sorry, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. I think that's all we have for this evening.
Just need to set another board meeting date.
Okay.
We still needing a suite for the budget.
Yeah, Tuesday.
So.
Set five.
We have one scheduled, right, Tuesday?
Yep, the Friday.
Five.
Yep. Can we worry about doing that next week or do you want me to set up a date now?
I would like to do it now only because we had a litigant here who needs to submit a liquor license application and because it's new, it should meet the public hearing. And in order, and we have to have the public hearing, I think, 10 days before advertising, a week or 10 days before the public hearing. So what we would do is if we could come up with a date, we could advertise, I can submit the ad tomorrow. So it would run next week, in the next week, same job, other times. The public hearing would be right before the board meeting, the next board meeting, so.
Maybe that's the 27th on Tuesday work for everybody.
What's that?
I'm saying the 27th, which would be the Tuesday after our budget meeting.
I can do the 27th.
I, I don't know that it needs to be that soon. We, we've covered a lot of stuff here tonight. The only, the only thing we're gonna have is, is budget. So if you wanna meet again on the, on the 27th that's on, I don't know that we're gonna have a whole lot of stuff to cover.
And push it to the floor.
In that, so I would be.
You could go to the board. Yeah.
I would say June 4th, uh, May 4th.
Okay. May 4th, Marty, I can.
Nat, what do you, Nat's our person that handles all those applications. Nat, what do you think of that as May 4th, does that work?
That's good.
Yep, she said it should.
What time?
Okay. So, so what we would do, we would have, we would have the board meeting at 5:30, but we would have the public hearing at, at 5 o'clock. And take care of that and then after that, you know, we could approve the, the application on our end.
So are we gonna need to set up a way for the public to call in on that, at 5 o'clock, or?
Um, yeah, we could. We could just put a call-in number.
Yeah.
Uh, for the public hearing, you mean, yeah.
Yeah.
Gary, where are we at with the, I know like everyone really wants to have a town meeting in June, we're already April, whatever. Um, what needs to be done for the mark seer request for property and like are we, are we moving forward to do something for that? Cause we, we didn't do the last town meeting and you said that was okay, but.
No, but the plan, we're gonna put it on, on maybe the next board meeting agenda.
Okay.
And come and figure out what we're, what we're gonna do to come up with a language that needs to go into the town meeting more. So we're still a good two, at least two board meetings away, uh, two or three board meetings before we have a town meeting more.
Well, yeah, but.
Before we have a town meeting.
We have to figure out the language, but don't, aren't we supposed to be, I mean, did we find out if the neighbor want, wants to split it? Did we, did we even figure out what we're doing with this? I think there were questions about, about that, right?
Yeah, we done it, yeah.
Right, okay. I, I just, I don't want it to slip through the cracks, I guess.
No, it won't.
And the planning board thing for the things.
The planning board?
Well, the, for them, recommendations for the things.
Think, think the planning board printed it back to the board, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I don't think it's a plan. I think they told, they said it's not a planning board. It should.
It's not, it's not part of any subdivision over there. It's, there's no recorded subdivision on that, it's just, just property, so wouldn't, wouldn't need any planning board action, I don't, I don't believe.
No, I mean for the things.
So, I mean, I think we, we put it in front of them just as, just as due diligence and process. But I think my memory serves me right, they really, they just remanded it back to us, to you guys. So we could, we could have conversations about, you know, we'll, we'll find out if there's any other interested persons up there who would want a piece of that. And, if you remember.
Yeah, because if I remember right, I mean, there were, there were other, other landowners that all agreed to, to allow it to happen.
No, but you're talking, you guys are talking about two different things.
Okay.
Different issue, yeah.
Okay.
That issue is with the planning board.
Yes.
So this one is the one here?
The, he's not, we're talking about the mark seer, a budding landowner, do they want it or not?
There's a road that Mark wanted.
Yep.
And we have to ask the person, the budding, if they want half or something, or, or.
Yeah, yeah, what's that road, that dirt road there?
I don't remember, sorry.
Reed Avenue, yeah.
Reed, yes, Reed Ave, that's where it is, exactly.
Okay.
All right. I guess at this point I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor? Motion. I mean, is adjourned.